Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, including Mary Ann Moran and Scranton Fire Department Inspector Joe Hoben. I'd also like everyone to please keep in their thoughts a special prayer for Kashan Waller, the North Scranton Viking, eight-year-old who was in a serious car crash in Dixon City just recently.
Mr. Smurl, Mr. Schuster.
President.
Dr. Rothschild, here. Mr. McAndrew.
President.
Mr. King.
Here. Please dispense with the reading in the minutes. Third Order 3A, correspondence dated September 18th, 2023, from Thomas J. Anderson and Associates, Inc., regarding the financial requirement and minimum municipal obligation, MMO, for the city of Scranton's pension plan for 2024. 3B, minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission meeting held August 16th, 2023. 3C, minutes of the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held August 16th, 2023. 3D, agenda for the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held September 20th, 2023. 3E, minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission meeting held June 21st, 2023, July 19th, 2023, and August 16th, 2023. 3F, minutes of the composite pension board meeting held August 16th, 2023. Any comments on Third Order items? If not, receive and file. Any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have one announcement. It was something that I mentioned the other week, but starting this week, September 28th through October 7th will be the Scranton Fringe Festival, and so that's our annual performing arts festival. I think it's something really unique to our area, and it's a great thing that we have here. So if you're interested in going to any of the shows or checking out what they have to offer during that time, you go to thescrantinfringe.org, and they'll have more information there and a schedule of shows. That's all I have. Thank you.
In addition to the moment of silence we just had for Inspector Joseph Hoben, my thoughts and prayers go out to the family. Joe was well-known not only in the fire service, but equally in the EMS service. He was appointed to the fire department on May 26, 1989, promoted to chauffeur in 1993, promoted to lieutenant in 1996, and spent much of his time as lieutenant at Rescue Company One, Sea Shift. He was promoted to the rank of fire inspector in 10 of 21. Joe was one of the only handful of firefighters in recent history to be awarded the Medal of Honor as a result of his actions during a fire at 821 West Locust Street on 1230 2000. He found a victim and was able to remove him to the front porch. Once the victim was out of the structure, Joe immediately began emergency medical care. Rest in peace, Inspector Hoben. And that is all I have. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Mr. McAndrew. May you rest in peace, and thank you for so many years of service to our city. A week this Sunday, October 8th, will be the 26th running of the Steamtown Marathon, which will begin at Forest City High School at 8:00 AM and finish right in front of Lack One County Courthouse here on North Washington Avenue. We have close to 1,000 runners coming in from 35 states, five countries. I've been the race director for the past 26 years, but never could have been able to achieve that without the cooperation and the expertise of our huge number of volunteers from 14 different communities, two different counties, including fire, police, medical assistance along the route. And we're thrilled to have these runners come into our city and really have a great weekend and see everything that northeastern Pennsylvania has to offer, and they'll be doing a lot of running along the rails and trails. I would just ask if people could be a little patient on Sunday morning, October 8th, as the runners are traveling, you know, through all 14 communities and finishing in downtown Scranton. We do have lots of volunteers helping to feed vehicles across the course as there's gaps. And we're proud to say that we've raised $2.3 million so far for the children, young adults at St. Joseph's Center, and we're hoping to raise a little bit more again this year for St. Joe's. So that's all I have at this time. Anyone else?
I had actually one or two things to add. I also wanted to give my condolences to Inspector Hoben's family, and we appreciate all that he did for the fire department for so many years and for the city. And so I want to say may rest in peace, but I had one other thing that I'd also wanted to add, which is going to be taking place at Naug Park this weekend, and that's going to be the Honeybee and Harvest Festival that the Greenhouse Project runs. And it's really cute. They do like a bee parade for the children, and so kids can dress up, and that all starts off at 12 and runs for a few hours during the day. So just another event going on this weekend that I want to mention. Thank you.
Fourth Order, citizen participation.
Joan Hodewanitz, Scranton. On December 16th this year will mark the seventh anniversary of the sale of the sewer system. And when that happened, the city became responsible for storm water management. Now, over the years, I've seen a lot of publicity about other initiatives, you know, the pool at Naug, the walkability study, the Sorenti Center, on and on. But it seems that the sewer authority and the stormwater management are kind of, well, we'll have a study, but it's not really a high priority. And I wonder what would have happened this month if we had stormwater management seven years ago. It was the city's responsibility. It'd be nice to see members of the administration at sewer authority meetings. You remember the sewer authority? You know, it's the authority that would not die. They're still out there trying to get their easements completed. They're also the holdup on the 2022 audit, I'm told. They don't care. I mean, they don't answer to anybody. They don't answer to the mayor, and they don't answer to you, and they don't answer to the voters. Having said that, let's raise stormwater management to a very high priority because the rains aren't going to stop this year. It's going to keep raining, and those people trying to recover from all that damage, they're going to have a wonderful time. And for all we know, these storms are going to get more frequent and more severe as time goes on. With that in mind, I'd like to make a suggestion. I raised it last week. I raise it again. In '63, my parents lost their home to a mine cave. It was condemned on the spot, the only home of five condemned that way. And so we were homeless for the next seven months. But it took five years before we were bought out, and for five years, we had to pay property taxes, okay, for property that we couldn't even enter. Now, you know, that's water over the dam, so to speak. I would hope that you, as a taxing authority, the city, Scranton School District, and the county, would offer a break to these people whose homes are going to be condemned, who are going to have to wait on a buyout. They should not have to have insult added to injury by having to pay property taxes on property that's of no use to them. Even those people who are going to try to repair their homes, they're going to take a severe financial hit. And if you think the insurance companies are not going to try to evade the responsibility to play claims, well, you got to know the thought coming, because they will. So please help these families out. Give them a break, because it's the right thing to do. On the $4 million general obligation note, will you please, in Third Order next week, publish this new financial data? Because the current backup background information you put last week is out of date. It's not 4.65% interest rate. It's 4.85%. It's not an eight-year note, and it's not a 40-year note. It's a nine-year note. And amortization schedule is now available, so you can publish that. 5B, the comprehensive evaluation of operations. That's a very interesting thing. They talk about all kinds of things like space utilization. Is that a code word for buying the fidelity bank next door? I think it is. I think, you know, it says, "This is not a completely exhaustive list, but captures the spirit of the project." I'd say that, you know, most of the terminology in the back of this deliberately vague, because I think that's one of the things that that is, I'm trying to go forward with this $110,000, is to justify expansion next door. So you should take a hard look at that. And I'd love to see the firefighter's contract on the website. It's been 175 days since that was done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodewanitz.
Good evening, Council. Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here is I'd like to make a comment about the first speaker and just add something to what she said, because I think it's important for the residents to Scranton to understand why they had flooding in the city or what may have contributed to it. The state of Pennsylvania has been removing small dams that were used to control water flow, and so in their unwillingness to repair these dams or replace them, they've removed them, which helps to let the water come to lower points much quicker, causing flooding and a lot of other problems. So I really think that a lack of participation by people and a lack of being informed on what's taking place in your government has caused great harm to people, and it'll continue to do that as long as you don't vote and you don't pay attention. And to be honest with you, you only have yourself to blame, okay? There was even a loss of life in the last flooding episode. And our government just isn't functioning on any level whatsoever. And sooner or later, the public is going to realize that they're just the guys paying all the bills, and the people you elect, they could care less about anything that has to do with you. We can just go back to the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority, where a council president who didn't agree with the sale put it on the agenda, and then how the reserve fund was looted. And to be honest with you, we don't need another authority in the city of Scranton, and we don't need to combine with a group to create an authority. We need to start electing people to government that can do their job and actually run a city, whether it's DPW, you know, whatever it is. The stormwater system needs to go right back to where the Scranton Sewer Authority was going to take it. The city now needs to build a plant to process the stormwater and build retention ponds, and the city needs to do that on its own. We need to stop creating authorities, because they don't answer to anybody. They just enslave everyone and stick us with a ton of debt. And as you can see in the last week's agenda, I noticed we've lost another court case, just money, just like heaving it out the window. You know, I just feel sorry for the residents that we have been so poorly represented in my whole lifetime. And, you know, we can hold caucuses here. We can pretend this government's functioning for us, but it's really not. I mean, just take a look at our federal government. Every taxpayer owes $260,000 for the national debt, and we've got people crossing our borders that aren't citizens that are gobbling up tons of money, and it doesn't help the average citizen. And the president is violating all the laws and the oath he took as president to secure the border and a host of other things, and people just don't care. And it's not just a Democratic issue, because the Republicans haven't tried to remove him for not living up to his oath of office. Our country's a complete mess and a complete freefall. You know, I'm really disgusted that the American people don't care. And we look at our area hospitals. Who stepped in to do something about that? You know, they've suspended the surgeon at the hospital I was talking about because they lost another patient. Our healthcare system has collapsed. And the last thing I have to say here is, Mr. King, I asked you a long time ago, how the board was appointed at ECTV, and I hope that in the next meeting you would share how that board was appointed and how they got their positions on that board and what role the city played? Because probably by next week, I'll be at the federal courthouse filing my, whatever you want to call it, my brief, whatever you want to call it, with the federal court, because I'm going to take ECTV there, and I'm going to take a lot more people there, if I can. And I just hope that whoever their attorney is, they're ready for what's going to happen. And I may lose, but at least I'm going to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Virgil Argenta, Scranton. Once again, rumors are swirling around the hotel shared on Meadow Avenue. Specifically, it's being used as a location to house migrants. As of early Friday, the rumor includes both the hotel and Whittier Number Two school being used. You're aware, the question has been asked several times with regard to the hotel issue. The hotel was recently and had a name change to ANZ, A-N-Z, which they proudly advertise with political-style yard signs decorating the curb line. ANZ is not a hotel. They run globally as a hostel, providing long-term stay accommodations. Do our current zoning laws address hostels and long-term accommodations? Does changing the identity to a long-term accommodation circumvent hotel rules? Whereas a hotel has certain restrictions regarding by who and how they can be inspected and regulated. Opposed to a hostel, which is a long-term stay, does a long-term stay allow, for instance, illegal immigrants to be housed there, since it's not a hotel? Has our city ordinance been revised to protect our city from being inundated with illegal immigrants so that they may not circumvent the rules we have on the books? I would ask that this body investigate and take the appropriate action so that the mayor and her administration must adhere to the laws that we have on our books. On June 27th, a resident asked, "Are we a sanctuary city?" I will ask for clarification for the record. Are we a sanctuary city? Secondly, I asked about the vetting process for the homeless used in Weston Field. Did we receive clarification for that issue yet? In addition, who is monitoring their use and who responds when there is an issue? Where are we at with the water testing study? Again, my neighborhood, water has been brown on two separate occasions this week. With the properly functioning water filtration system, this should not be occurring. This is a health issue. It should be standard monthly or, at the very least, quarterly testing citywide. Can we please have an update on the Sorenti Center? When can the public tour this facility, and will the homeless people also be given vouchers to use this particular facility? If I have a couple, can I present some pictures? The first one is a stop work order. You could barely read the writing, and you'll see several misspelled words. And you know, when you go to court, a lot of times when you misspell and you put something wrong, you lose a case. I mean, if you're in that, the workers, if you're into code enforcement, you should know how to spell demolition and demolish and certain things. Another one is the Fire Rabbits Home in the 1500 of West Gibson. Another one is 614 North Lincoln. Fire Rabbits has been sitting that way for months. Another one is 6, I believe it's 634 North Sumner Avenue. There's a house behind all that. The other one is Weston Field, the pool complex. If that wasn't on any one of our properties, you know what would happen. So why is the city any different? Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Argenta. Mr. Voldenberg, after council takes a look at some of these pictures, I would ask that if you, we're going to ask you to forward these down to code enforcement and ask them to visit these properties and take the appropriate action.
I will, Mr. King.
Good evening, Council. Len Srebro, Kaiser Valley flood victim. I guess nobody listened to me last week when I suggested that, you know, be reasonable about the time with the caucus, you know? And I was told at that time that you guys have jobs, that you, you know, you have to finish working. What about our time? You know, a lot of us, like I said, are elderly, and to be out this late, another thing, you know, if you're going to have these long caucuses, well, then how about having them on another day? Give us a break. You know, so the flooding, you know, talking to people about what they heard, the reason for the flooding was once again, the pump house wasn't working. I understand people were told that it was a belt, that something happened to the belt. Geez, I'm a mechanic, you know, and go get another belt. What's the big deal? But I also talked to somebody from Flood Control that morning, and I was told that it blew a seal. You know, so we still don't have a working pump house, you know, to get the water out. They had to bring in portable pumps. And right now, the pump house, you know, if it rains like it's supposed to Friday, you know, it's unbelievable that all the residents now, you just hear the possibility of any kind of rain, and you start freaking out automatically. You know, how about, again, this pump house ready for the next flood, which is inevitable? You know, and I don't understand, they put a new pump in after the flood of the, on the 19th. Was that a new pump or a used pump? I'd like to know that. And being a mechanic, I want to know what kind of warranty you got on it that they installed that pump and then it didn't work for this past flood? You know, I want to know these things. Another thing, too, when I learned that we were going to get another storm, I called DPW. I left a message. I spoke to so many people with Flood Control around the area, and I asked for five to seven sandbags that I know the floodwaters, that geez, if I put them on the corner where the water eventually comes over the curb, I could redirect the floodwaters to the middle of the street instead of, you know, going onto people's property next to mine and washing out their basement. Nobody, four different people I talked to from Flood Control and DPW, nobody would bring sandbags. And sure enough, the most recent flood came, and they got their basement washed out again. I think there should be some kind of an emergency number for DPW. It seems like these floods only come on the weekends, but they only have regular business You know, how about if it's so much problems with the caucus and the residents saying what they need to say? You know, why can't you guys come to us? Why can't we have a meeting about the flood-only situation at the Kaiser Valley Community Center? You know, why can't you guys come to us for a change, you know? And we could discuss this, you know, like the residents want to say. And, you know, I have to get in the habit anymore. When people ask me, "How much water did you get, Len?", and I say, "I didn't get any. I got mud." You know, that's the worst part of the cleanup afterwards. And I know, living there 12 years, I know where all this problem is coming from. I still don't understand why, you know, I'd love to talk to engineers, how they come up with their study. You know, why don't you have an engineer here at the caucus or else at the meetings to speak to the residents here? You know, I'd love to talk to an engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Srebro.
Yeah, you know, I always do it in five minutes. Can you give me one more minute? You know, see, you want to cut me off.
I did give you extra time, Mr. Srebro. I bet you were well beyond your five minutes.
We see how you are.
Thank you. Just trying to be fair.
All right, Council. I'm going to try to stay by this and not get carried away. Y'all might remember that I complained about my brother in Memphis losing his insurance and being, this was March 26th, immediately being thrown out of the hospital that day. He had kidney failure, and one leg was giving him all kinds of trouble with a blood clot and so forth. His social worker tried to get his insurance back, but that must take forever, you know? He was so sick, he went back dozens of times to four or five different hospitals in Memphis and Mississippi. Memphis got part of Mississippi and Arkansas, if you know where it is in the corner there. He went to the hospitals in that section. One time, he was so sick that... One time he was so sick, the landlady put him in an ambulance and sent him. He was there for three hours, they didn't see him, they put him in a cab and sent him home. That's, that's what's happened in America, people. Here's a man that worked, when he was 12, 13, he cut grass in our neighborhood. He's worked and worked and worked all his life to last January when he got sick. And they take away his, his insurance. The Biden administration needs it for all this trash that's coming in. You see it in the paper every day, millions. You're going to wonder where the Medicare and Social Security went. That's where it's going. Last year, when my brother was, I mean, my, when my son was sick and he died at God's Sengers, I was there in the waiting room, out and off for three, about two weeks, talking to different people. I met one of them. Now, listen, you people need to get in your car, somebody, don't believe me, go down to Boozey and turn left on 502. You go out where the river is, there's railroad tracks, just a little tiny ways off the intersection, the businesses. You'll see about 100, maybe more illegals camped there. I've been there, I've talked to them. I talked to them in the hospital, I talked to them at the convenience store where they, they go, they got money from something. They're very unhappy down there now that it's getting cold. I haven't been there since summertime. When I was at, they are talking, when I was at the hospital talking, they, this one jokingly said, what a nice neighborhood. They enjoy the big houses there. They'll make that neighborhood look like Capous Avenue in no time. They, they have nowhere to go except Scranton and Wilkes-Barre. It's a shame, it's a shame. These people have brought every disease known to man into America. There's polio in New York State. There's VD all over this country that nobody wants to talk about unless you talk to someone in the medical field. As far as I'm concerned, Biden's policies murdered my brother, just as plain as if they put a gun to his head, taking away his insurance and having no care whatsoever. This was needless. I talked to his wife this afternoon at 3 o'clock. She's, she's in a nursing home with MS, she'll never leave there. She has nobody but me and Rosie to, to converse with, no husband. That's, that's America that Biden's turned this into. I thank you for letting me be up here. Page needs to think about that garbage down at Boozey because they, they're going to move someplace and you sure don't want them for neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Dave Dobson.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. Okay, first of all, I'm on the pension loss still. And I'd just love to hear about a caucus on that. And if necessary, how we can reform it that we stop losing massive amounts of money when there isn't a large stock market disruption in a year. That's unconscionable and it should be well before we set next year's budget because if something doesn't change, and it probably won't, the minimum monthly obligation will go up. Now, I've spoken about water and the bill is ungodly, it's gone up again. My basic water bill is up to 120 bucks a month for two people. No family there, no watering plants, nothing. Well, I looked at my electric bill and it's up about 30% from last year. And even worse yet, I use 30% less electricity than I did in August of last year. I've been cutting back on my air conditioning. I use it in one room about two hours. And these bills just keep going up with our lack of regulation. I mean, it's, it's really, it's putting a squeeze on things and it's almost infuriating. Well, it is infuriating. I was on the phone with the rant to PPL. It's just ridiculous. We have to stop, which, it has to stop, it has to stop somewhere. I, I don't really consider the PUC as a very good regulatory agency anymore. And those situations have to be regulated. By the way, if you ever did lose your power or your water because of inability to pay, your house is immediately condemnable. So, something to think about. I never bought into that, that fixed income. I worked for seven years for a company that even stole money out of my 401K on my last job. And my 201K, they didn't pay into it themselves, they just didn't turn the money over. Talk about, and once again, I'd like to reiterate 501(c)(3) and (c)(4), which that ties in with our water. Please stay out of political policy in Scranton, you're a guest and you're not paying the bill. You're not paying the taxes and that it takes to run a city. And you may think you're intelligent and you're very well educated, but you know, a car mechanic doesn't make a good English teacher and an English teacher doesn't make a good car mechanic. That's all there is to it. Swim pole repairs, repairs first, not plans to rebuild everything from ground up. Grouse was mentioned by someone else here and it's a very effective way of repairing a great big crack. And it's just, we don't have the kind of money with all of these other things facing us. As far as domestic threats and harassment, people be advised, you can call somebody on the phone and make a threat, but if you found out, the government in all areas, municipal lawn are getting tired of it and somebody's going to wind up, somebody's going to wind up, people are going to start getting arrested and then they're crying about it, poor me, I would just drink on some beer. Walkability, quickly, I will mention once again, Mattis Avenue was designated as a bike path and it is a parking area for General Dynamics. They were down here years ago, over meters being put there, that only took two hours of coins. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Rick Little.
Good evening, Council. There's, there's a problem with Scranton Housing Authority. It's supposed to be a HUD landlord following the, the rules of HUD, which are prob, which are notarized in, in the law, the lease, from CFR 24966. All the rules there are broken. They aren't keeping records of the 25 correspondences I sent to them. And they're, it's being run by criminal prosecutors. I mean, I mean, that is exactly what Carl Willnot was for 14 years and his henchmen that he hired, David Coyne, who evicted me twice in, in the, in the magistrate court. There's no records of the magistrate court, there's just no records. I've been over there 20 times, I've talked to everybody. There's no record that, that Scranton Authority took me to the magistrate court. There's record, there's records of the people that appealed it, you know, who avoided eviction, but, but nothing with the magistrate court. I went to the Sunshine Act meeting. I had been trying to go to Scranton Housing Authority meetings for, for years. Every time I go there, the door's locked. Last time I went, it happened to be open. And I go in there and they're having a vote on the new executive director to replace Peculucci, I believe his name is, and it's Carl Willnot. I've written so many letters to Carl Willnot, I've had meetings with Carl Willnot. They've confiscated my stuff for over, over three years now and there's no resolution of it. You know, sometimes they unlock the door, sometimes they don't, you know, originally because they have so many tenant people in the building that, that, that cover up what, what they're doing. And, I mean, they were piling sheet rock in front of my storage area and then they broke the lock on my storage area and I called the police and the police are just laughing with the guy in the maintenance, the same guy that, that, that let the Lackawanna County Sheriff in because I was in, I hadn't seen my kid since he was eight. And these people are directly responsible for that. And they're, there's something really wrong here with their, their legal thing because now, now their legal counsel is, you know, the Shannon, blah, 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 Doherty, the same law firm that, that handles the school board. And they're telling me in the right to know, they're accusing me of harassment just for asking who works there. And they never did give me an answer through the right to know. And I went to the Court of Common Pleas and I, and the Court of Common Pleas says, well, you already got your answer. Well, I don't have my answer and it, for years I lived there. There's a fire there once or twice a week. It seems to me the city of Scranton should look, and it stopped suddenly when I, when I started to like complaining about it, but, you know, they have this vote and there's supposedly a tenant guy? I've been asking for years. There's no tenant person. And all of a sudden, I'm at the Sunshine Meeting, which they canceled out, the legal part of it, they said, oh, we're doing the legal part in the executive session because, I think because I was there and Carl Willnot, you know, made more false accusations against me. But I'm just trying to live. And it's totally improper to have all these prosecutors just evicting people when they're controlling all the police and everything. And there, there has to be a right to know that comes from this body and who works there? Who works there? You know, because they have this vote with the tenant guy and the tenant guy doesn't even live there, you know? I looked that up, I know I'm out of time, but.
Thank you, Mr. Little. That exhaust sign in list, is there anyone else like to be heard by Council?
Lori O'Hara, how you doing? I had a couple of things that I wanted to talk about tonight, but I was listening to, I'm going to call him Mr. Mufflehon, and, and I did speak with the Mountain Hallway and it is, listening to him, I kind of understand what he's talking about because I'm also concerned about a lot of the prevention aspects of things, especially where homeless is concerned. I did go to a meeting a while ago because it was listed in the paper on August 9th and it was about the funding for all kinds of programs, including homeless assistance services. And then it said if you had any questions or anything to offer to show up, but it didn't make much sense to me, they were just talking about regular numbers. So first of all, safety first, second and always. I taught gymnastics and every summer camp, we would play that film, Summer Safety First, Second and Always. And what it is, what it is, it's an awareness of catastrophic results if rules are not applied. So some of the rules of safety are developed through foundational development of basic skills to support a transition to a larger and higher risk skills. And the reason I bring this up is I believe that if we can have a foundation on the ground with the homeless encampments, that it would provide a better, better transition to living as a productive and contributing member of society. So if as residents who pay taxes and live by rules, why should the homeless be exempt from rules and laws? And I believe that when the subject of who is responsible and who has jurisdiction and whose land is it, and this one's going to call that one, and then none of that helps with the homeless and the residents are keeping the city safe. So in light of the nature to care about people and seeing so much online of like hardships within the city and paying more attention now to council meetings, et cetera, you know, it's, it's very hard to see the deterioration of my once wonderful city. You know, I went to high school here, my brothers went to high school here, my parents, we all graduated from Central. And just walking around, it's not the same, it's hard. And, and I have an idea and it's visionary and it's long-term and it's developing and it's inclusive and it's community across the board, it's an initiative that could possibly be an answer in part and bring collective agencies truly together for the common good of all people regardless of beliefs. It's a development of community between the homeless community and the residential community. I have a daughter that I lost to fentanyl on these streets in 2018, none of that is left up since, let up since. I have another daughter that's still living within the city and I have absolute real fear for her every time she's outside a certain type of night. I've asked people, if I'm not around, would you keep an eye on her? I mean, like, it's, it's scary, it's, it's so different than when we were able to walk the streets. So what I would like to do is to, so how do we get there? There's video programs being utilized to help homeless in similar areas and it's basically out of California. And my, my interpretation would be something like a rehabilitation homeless camp. The first thing you would have to do since they are, they are where they are, that you would need to meet them on the ground. And then you can do something like, run it like a campground where you have rules and you have structure. And you get agreements from landowners, you know, so you don't have, it's his land, it's my land, it's the other land. And then incorporate campground rehab type style rules and there has to be rules and structure because he was speaking about structure and that's all preventative. And you can't have drugs or alcohol, your campsite's got to be clean, tidy for inspections, et cetera, because if it's not their land, then they can go unless they want to play by rules. And if you make your homeless encampments more of a rehabilitative type encampment, then that word's going to get out. Because right now, it's free for all in Scranton and every drug dealer is here and they're having a good time at the expense of lives. I have another mother that will never hear the word "mom" again. So it's serious. And we need to, like, really get into the stuff. If you want to have these programs and do all this stuff, then let's do it. Get on the ground, set up camps, get permissions, do whatever you have to do. Find the funding. You'll need funding for receptacles, you'll need funding for porta-potties, you'll need funding for security, lighting, designated areas, applications. And they can't live for free. They get to volunteer their services because somebody's got a skill somewhere. And then if you have an application form, you can pinpoint, like he was saying, what it is they need, where it is you can start, how they can help. Establish the three-strike rule. I was in rehab. You screw up, they pack your bag, they take you to the bus station, you're done. You don't get to have a free-for-all. And that's what's happening around here, is there's just too much, just going crazy. And you can't move one from here and then one from there and expect something to get done. And if it's private land, get the permissions.
Thank you, Ms. O'Hara.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
What's that?
Members of council, we should feel blessed that a once-in-a-lifetime water event happened again. It must be a miracle, as no one could have foretold, that we did not have 100 years to fix this. Last week, Mr. King was asked, "How many letters did you send out to people who should be donating, the mayor sent out that should be donating to the pilot program?" Mr. King directed to Mr. Waldenberg to get right on asking that question. It reminded me that well before this body went on to break in August, I had the same thing. I asked, "How many letters had been sent out? To whom and how many were responded to? What happened to that prior request of well over a month or two months ago? It wasn't responded to or followed up on." Can you explain why city council, on its request for information, when it puts forward as being told to go back to the citizen and tell them to put a right-to-know in or a 3-1-1? As far as I know, you put in the request. You are not required by law to do either of those processes. When a citizen asks, it's one thing, but when council asks on behalf of a citizen, council is asking for that information. Why is council allowing this pushback? I heard explained in the room that the head of council went to the mayor and conspired... Let me change that because it might be a bit harsh. Asked the mayor if they could please stop forcing council to appoint directors and waivers retrospectively. The mayor, after obvious concern in how she was putting forth the violations through, decided to stack the deck, and Mr. King returned and said she would, at that point, put in an interim appointment to avoid conflict. Only Mr. McCandrew paused to say that concept seems wrong. I don't know if anyone asked the solicitor, as it was a legal question, but that may be an opinion that some people don't want to hear. The mayor does have the authority to appoint an interim director level position. They can hold the office for 45 days. But nowhere in the body does it allow the appointment to be retrospective by backdating or even an interim being appointed without council's approval. The interim appointment is now being used as it's a direct attempt to circumvent the charter and separation of powers. Mr. King brought forth a statement from the administration. "If I can't just appoint it, then I'll put it forward as interim." The intent is clear. As for interim appointments made prior in all of those emergencies, maybe we can get a list from HR of when a new director or emergency position is filled. Was there a letter of resignation or notice given? And provide those dates to council so they know when that employee actually left. But I doubt you'll get that. Sometimes I feel like coming to council and speaking for change in government is like a one-armed bandit. You step up to it, put your money in, pull the handle, and you watch the dial spin. Click, click, click. Oh, I lost. Then I come back here to the next council session. I put in another coin, I pull that lever, click, click, click. We lost. And people coming to this body are tired because when we come up here to speak, we keep feeding that one-armed bandit over and over again. And we keep getting the same result of not getting heard, of getting pushed off and ignored in a lot of the situations. I think prospective laws are a danger to the way this body works. There's a separation of power for a reason. And there is a reason why the mayor in appointments has to come to this body before appointments. An interim, in the verbiage of it, does not exclude in anywhere that city council does not have authority over interim appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. Is there anyone else like to be heard?
Hi, Victoria Frotia, Scranton resident. So there's an issue that I've noticed. I commute around the city for work, and I keep coming across the one intersection at Hickory Street and South Washington Avenue. So the road's been paved over a year ago, and there's no lines drawn on the road, nor is there signs designating who should be going which way in which lane. So there used to be like a left-turning lane, I believe, and a straight and right-turning lane. Now I've gotten straight, I've gone straight myself in both lanes, and I'm getting honked at in both sides. So I was just wondering if we could get some lines painted and some signs put up. And, yeah, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Waldenberg, can you contact DPW and see if that can be addressed?
I will. I'll send it in the morning.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
Delmar Gziewicz, Scranton City taxpayer. I know it's getting late, so I'll try to be brief. Last week, one of my friends was biking home from work. She can't quite afford a car, so she bikes to work every day to and from. It's not just healthy, but it's a good way to commute. And she was ran over by a car, thrown headfirst onto the pavement, and is now disabled. She's been disfigured, her arms are broken, she can't work anymore for the time being. And this leaves her wife and child living off her disability check. Now, this just highlights that while accidents happen, they can be mitigated. The fact that everyone here is relying on cars as their only form of transportation and is considered to be the only legitimate form of transportation and is by far and away the only safe form of transportation really puts an undue burden on our community and on our citizens. And taking measures to improve public safety, such as the walkability initiative you guys moved through two weeks ago, which I believe includes bike lanes, is really, really important for our city going forward, for our residents to stay safe, to stay healthy, and to stay happy. It's also very important because a lot of senior citizens are reluctant to give up their driver's license because then they lose their independence. And in an area with a very large geriatric population, being able to give people the opportunity to not rely on their car for independence once they reach an age where driving might not be safe anymore, or for people who it never was, for people who have physical conditions, including blindness or even seizures, people who can't drive. So alternative modes of transportation, biking, walking, and of course, the train, will give people a safe way to travel consistently and not just in their neighborhoods, but also without. Thank you.
Thank you, Delmar. Is there anyone else like to be heard?
Fifth order, five motions.
Ms. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few tonight. First, I'd like to start off by expressing condolences to Mr. Hogan's family, to his friends, and to the rest of the Scranton Fire Department. A couple of things from last week. One of the questions I had asked Mr. Waldenberg was about the University of Scranton rental properties and if the city is pursuing this through our rental ordinance. I didn't see that on the list of answers that we got back, but if we could pursue that again.
We're awaiting those answers, sir. I'll follow up.
Thank you very much. Also, someone come up at public comment and asked about, I think, the vouchers over at Weston Field, and that was another inquiry that I had. So can we look into whether the city is providing vouchers for homeless to use Weston Field facilities?
I will.
Thank you. A commenter brought it up tonight about employees and when they leave. In third order tonight, going through some of those pension meeting minutes, it does seem that we lost five employees that council was unaware of until I read through those minutes, but five employees have now left the city. City employment. I did get back some answers to some questions. I could read through some of them, but I don't think I'll do all of them. So a question I had in the pump house last week. So Councilman Schuster asked questions regarding the pump house in Kaiser Valley. Was the pump house on Maryfield Avenue turned on at the time of the rain event? Did the pump house perform as expected during the flood event? Further, does the DPW maintain 24/7 call-out crew for such emergencies? Council is interested in clarifying the performance and the process of the pump during our flood event. The answer that I received was, "It is believed and therefore revered that these questions were answered during the caucus approximately 10 days ago and can be addressed again in another caucus if necessary." So my recollection of that event was that Ms. Cipriani and the mayor were not aware of the pump house, and they were going to look into it and get back to us. So I don't believe those questions were answered during the caucus. We've had rain in the last few days, and one thing I will say is the rain that we had wasn't extraordinary. It was a regular rain event, and Maryfield Avenue then again flooded up to a level that I've never seen in regular rain. So we got some more answers tonight than we had in the past. They said it was a belt. I heard during public comment, there might have been a seal. I'm not sure what it was, but I didn't get a straight answer on the workings of the pump house in Kaiser Valley, which does protect, I'd say, 30 to, well, 20 to 30 homes in that Another answer I got, I've asked for probably three to four weeks in a row, is this breadbasket PA. Again, I've said they probably do great things. They received a grant that is coming through our community center funds. I disagree with the fact that it is a grant, as it was a line item in the budget, but the answer I got was that the breadbasket works out of one of our community centers. I got a copy-paste answer two weeks in a row of the same thing, and then today I did get a more substantial answer, and it was a list of the seven places where this group works out of. None of them were community centers, but the answer I was given was, "Attached, please find a list of locations for the breadbasket of any PA. We don't know how else to answer these questions and do not want to offend Councilman Schuster by copying-pasting prior answers." None of these locations were community centers in the city, so I do not know why they're receiving community center funds. I'll stop at that.
Thank you, Ms. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild.
Yes, I had a concern I wanted to bring forward from someone I spoke with earlier who says that there is some drug activity going on at the MART station, and I wanted to forward that along to the Scranton Police as well as to COLTS for them to investigate the concern, and I could get more detailed information to send along with it.
I'll take care of it, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. And on the subject of COLTS, I also wanted to go back to something that I brought up that I think was a couple of months ago, and we had received a response from them. There were a couple of things that they were looking, that the person I spoke to was looking for, including like the addition of a stop on Lackawanna Avenue so that it's closer to some of the medical facilities within the marketplace. And the concern we, the response we had gotten back was that they hadn't discussed that yet, and that was something that they would bring forward and look into further, but we never had any follow-up. So if we could talk to them about a follow-up and see if there's anything that's resulted from those questions. I think they also wanted to see if we could put any sort of signage along Lackawanna Avenue outside of the MART station to make it safer for them to make a left turn out of there.
I'll follow up.
Great, thank you. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandrew.
Okay, I'm going to respond to the questions that I got answers for from last week. So last week, I brought up the concern that's been brought to me about contractors working on the weekends without permits. All right, it's not fair, we all get it, and it's not, might not be safe either. So the answer we received is administration has heard Councilman McCandrew's allegations, concerns about contracting practices, and is looking into the same. So that's the only response I got about that. So new stuff. You know, for the past few weeks, the mayor and the city's administration have been actively trying to replace a housing authority board member, Magistrate Terry Gallagher, that has one year left on his appointment. Last week, we pulled the replacement appointment legislation to then receive a letter from the city's legal department that we have 30 days to reintroduce. So this week, we decided to introduce it again. And at the end of business yesterday, we were authorized, like we need their authorization from the city's legal department, to pull this appointment from the agenda along with some type of legal jujitsu stating that they still can send replacement legislation at any time. It's easy math here. Magistrate Gallagher's first five-year appointment was in 1984. His current appointment ends in 2024. Five times eight equals 40. Mr. Waldenberg, would you please send correspondence to the mayor and the city's legal department asking one simple question? Are they going to honor Magistrate Gallagher's remaining year of his appointment? Also, maybe we could have Rubicon. They're our numbers experts. Since they stated last week, they really don't have anything going on until January with their third rollout in two years, to go over there to the city's legal department and give them a math lesson. Five times eight equals 40. Next, so during last week's meeting, it was made mention of vouchers being issued to Scranton's homeless populations for the use of Western Field shower areas. I believe it was stated by someone here that the homeless people utilizing these vouchers were being vetted. I received a call right after the meeting from one of the lovely ladies that is a member of Western Field. These ladies were not made aware of any of this and have grave concerns. They are between the ages of 55 and 89 and utilize this facility in a therapeutic rehabilitative way along with the social aspect. These ladies have been getting the runaround for over a year with inconsistent swim times and days along with no set schedule and the absence of lifeguards and broken promises. And I can verify it because they've been bringing it up for a year. Do they sympathize with the homeless and their struggles? Yes. I sympathize too with the homeless and their struggles. I sympathize too with the homeless and their struggles, but I sympathize right now more with these ladies that have, you know, they've worked their whole lives. They call me all the time. They pay their taxes and pay their membership fees, and to not even be told that they will be sharing locker and shower areas with no notice to them as paying members is not good policy, and it's providing them zero courtesy. So, they have valid questions, Mr. Voldenberg? How and if they are really being vetted? Number two, with the uptick of COVID, are they all fully vaccinated? Is that part of the vetting process? Who is checking them in and attending to them while they're there? Why can't there be a schedule for this after the swim schedule? So, is there a way to schedule it where, you know, they have, they pay their membership, they go in, they do their swim time, and they're therapeutic, and they're exercise piece, and then, you know, rotate that with the homeless that are using the facilities? And a final question, how long are these vouchers good for? A day, a week, a month? So, if you can please forward them questions, that'd be greatly appreciated.
I will, Mr. McCandry.
All right, number three, a few residents came to me, wait, wait a second. So, to piggyback on that, residents asked council to advise on what vetting processes use for the homeless population that are allowed to stay and use the Western Field facility? The answer we got back, because this was posed last week, is please stay tuned for an answer to this question. So, I don't know what that means, though. That's usually like a news break or something. All right, so, but we'll stay tuned because we need these answers, and these poor ladies do too. The third question, or motion I have, or not actually a motion, but a concern. A few residents came to me about the intersection of Price Street and Van Buren, and the 2,000 block. This is a Colts bus stop, and the residents are saying that a four-way stop sign at this intersection is greatly needed. They're stating that you have to actually edge yourself out before, because of poor line of sight, as well as, you know, people are parking illegally too close to the two stop signs that are there, that are impairing some vision there. And also, there's a great deal of drivers speeding through that intersection. So, I actually took a ride up there, and I can attest that this does present a safety issue. So, Mr. Voldenberg, would you please contact the Highway Department and City Engineering for a traffic study with regards to this safety issue? Have them take a peek at it.
I'll submit it tomorrow, sir.
All right, one more, too. So, this, and I actually took a look at this, too, and it is a safety issue. So, off of Main Avenue down Landis Street, all right? So, you go down Landis, and there's a stop sign, the second stop sign in front of you is the junkyard. To the left and to the right, to the left, you would go to Cloverfield, all right? So, when you stop at that stop sign, on your right and on your left, there is a big trailer parked there, and it's been there for a long time. And then, there's a truck on the other side, or vice versa. I'm not sure which one is a truck, but when you go to pull out, it's the same issue as this other one I just mentioned. You can't see, and that's where all the big school buses are parked, and they go back and forth in there. So, I myself use that way a lot, and, you know, and it's tough to pull out and take a look. I just think it's an accident waiting to happen. So, if, you know, the police, and, you know, these have been sitting there a while, and a lot of these don't even have license plates on them, so, or a lot of these, both of these. So, if you can have the police department take a look at that.
I will.
Thank you, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCandry. With respect to the mayor's attempt to appoint someone to replace Attorney Gallagher on the Scranton Housing Authority, you know, there was some spirited conversation, shall I say, that went back and forth as to when Attorney Gallagher's term ended. All I know is this, that all these authorities, they're typically appointed for five-year terms. Attorney Gallagher's first term began September 27th of 1984. So, it's pretty simple math. 84, 89, 94, 99, 2004, 2009, 2014, 2019, 2024. After, as I said, some discussion back and forth, the mayor sent me an email indicating that they're withdrawing that resolution. I don't, I'm hopeful that it ends there, and Attorney Gallagher will continue to fulfill his final year on the Scranton Housing Authority, but I guess time will tell. But for now, there's no resolution. We have nothing before this body, and I have documentation that it was withdrawn. So, some follow-up from last week. We received a complaint regarding quality of life issues, including accumulation of trash on the properties of 1423 and 1427 North Washington Avenue. Code enforcement was advised, and they're following through on citation to the property owners. A resident advised council of the worn-turny lane road markings at the intersections of South Washington Avenue and East Elm Street. Request was sent to DPW to update the road markings. So, whether down on East Elm, they may as well go to Hickory and take care of both of them, as we heard this evening. Council requests code enforcement revisit the property at 737 Taylor Avenue regarding water flow from the basement to the street and surrounding properties. The problem was determined to be an underground aquifer disturbed by roadwork on the block. Code enforcement is determining the next steps to resolve this ongoing issue. Received a complaint of vehicles parking on the grass and sidewalk in 1,000 block of Cedar Avenue. Scranton Police Department Highway Division was notified, and a number of vehicles were ticketed. Joan Hodowanitz, council, awaiting a response as to why the legislation related to the $2.5 million court award was just submitted in September, when the city was notified on March 17th that the payment was required. The answer was the administration continues to draft and submit legislation at appropriate times, including but not limited to, in response to court deadlines and demands from others as happened in this instance. Also, under Joan, the interest on the general obligation note series 2023 is actually 4.85% as discussed earlier, for nine years, as you had indicated. The total costs and amortization schedule were actually received this evening, and the final fees and charges. We'll ask, Frank, can you, the information that was provided to us tonight, can we place that in third order for next week?
I will, sir.
Thank you very much. Pocket Park tentative grand opening date. Regarding the Pocket Park grand opening, Leslie Collins of Scranton tomorrow advised that the finishing touches will be taking place, but first, the turf needs to become Plantings need to root. The fencing will need to remain at a minimum of five weeks. We'll be coordinating with our project partners to establish the timeline for public dedication, and we'll keep you updated and involved in that process. Sean McCandrew. Council reached out to the administration per request of Sean McCandrew, Scranton School Director. In addition to parents of Scranton High School students that are Scranton Police Department, please concentrate regular patrols on Olive Street between Penn Avenue and Scranton High School due to the growing amount of homeless on the blocks. In addition to code enforcement, review the properties and yards along the blocks. Mr. McCandrew and parents advised many students traverse the blocks to and from the high school. Residents and parents have noted an increased number of needles, used drug paraphernalia, and litter in the yards along this roadway. Council would like to schedule a meeting with the Scranton Police Department Chief Carroll to review and seek remedies to the issues. The response was the administration is scheduling a meeting of the city Scranton School District Shared Services Public Safety Committee to discuss this issue. Mayor Cagnetti responded to the school director, McCandrew, and copied Council President King. Mr. King and Council President McCandrew are members of this committee, and they did send us a number of dates out to choose from, and I filled in the dates I was available. So, we'll see when that meeting happens. Mr. Dobson, the current market value of the city of Scranton Composite Pension Fund as of August 31st was $115,381,323, has remained constant through 2023. The pension fund, like any investments in a 401K, were affected by the economy in 2021 and 2022, and has increased over the last year and a half. Marie Schumacher. Council sent a request to the administration for the listing of pilot payments to date. In addition to the date, to date correspondence was mailed to the not-for-profit entities. The administration responded by stating that they are compiling the information and will forward this information soon to council. Council asked for an update scheduled related to the East Mountain Stormwater Project. The administration responded that East Mountain Stormwater update is scheduled for October 25th at the Howard Gardner School. We sent a request to DPW management to revisit repairs to the lookout on Route 307. DPW has placed that on the worklist to be addressed. In response to Virgil Argenta, we sent a request to the administration asking the following questions to clarify the performance and process regarding the pumps at Kaiser Valley. Was the pump house at Mayor Field turned on at the time of the rain event? Did the pump house perform as expected during the flood event? Further, does the city DPW maintain a 24/7 call-out crew for such emergencies? The administration advised these questions were addressed at council caucus a few weeks ago and can be addressed again in another caucus if necessary. I think they were actually answered earlier this evening when Chief Judge was here. City council reached, asked if we reach out to Pennsylvania American Water to ask the water company when the most recent water quality testing was done for Scranton, and ask if there's a regular schedule for testing and when the next testing will be done. Pennsylvania American Water Company provided a link to review the many forms of testing done on the water quality in the city. Council will review and report back with their findings. Council followed up with the administration for a listing of all city vehicles and city employees assigned to each. Council received today, September 26th, and has the listing under review. And that's all I have at this time.
5B for introduction to resolution. Ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of the city of Scranton. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $110,000 for the project to be known as the Comprehensive Evaluation of Operations Project located at 340 North Washington Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18503, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton, PA to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant for up to $110,000 awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
At this time, I want to entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I'm just going to say, our capital budget hasn't been passed. This is a piece of our capital budget. I'm going to be voting no tonight because it's one of the items of the capital budget that I do not agree with as it pertains to city hall expansion.
All those in favor of introduction signify.
I stated also, last year and this year, you know, the purchase of, the potential purchase of the building next door is still in there, so I'll also be voting no.
Okay, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
2-2, the motion fails for lack of, draw it either.
5C for introduction to resolution. Ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Commonwealth Financing Authority Multimoto Transportation Fund for up to $668,911 to be used towards the street sign replacement project.
At this time, I want to entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5D for introduction to resolution. Ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of the underground miners to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $124,060 for the project to be known as Brooks Mine Restoration and Improvement Project located at 1901 Mulberry Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18510, Naug Park, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant for up to $124,060.
At this time, I want to entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. I know that there were some questions about this, and I believe Mr. Smurl got back to us and said, all the groups got together and they said that they absolutely need this funding, and they think it will benefit the mine, so I'll be voting yes. All those in favor, introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
6th order, 6A. Reading by title, filed a council number 86, 2023, in ordinance. Ratifying the local declaration of emergency issued by the office of the mayor and authorizing the office of the mayor to exercise and enforce the emergency powers necessary to preserve the health, welfare, and safety of the citizenry of the city of Scranton as a result of the localized flooding that occurred on September 9th, 2023, for a period of 14 days from the date of execution.
If we're reading by title of item 6A, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
6B, reading by title, filed a council number 87, 2023, in ordinance. Amending filed a council number 33, 2022, in ordinance as amended, entitled, General City Operating Budget 2023 to Increase the Debt Proceeds Account Number as noted by $3,790,000 and to Increase the Court Awards Account Number as noted by $3,790,000 to allow for the payment of unbudgeted legal settlement payments.
If we're reading by title of item 6B, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question.
On the question. Excuse me.
Microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. On the question, I'd like to make a motion to table 6B.
Second.
Second.
Because there's been a motion to table 6B, and a second. On the question.
Well, on the question, I take issue with the combination of these two pieces that should have been broken out, all right? And one is the class action suit that was awarded, is a court awarded, which I have no problem with, right? The second piece is awarding a company claiming breach of contract where, guess what? They violate or breach the contract they had when they participated in some corruption that was identified. So, I want it broken out. I want to vote on the pieces separated. I don't, both of them shouldn't have been in there in the first place. I even question the reason that they are. So, that is why I'll be voting yes to table.
So, on the question, I also stated my opinion at that point in time when this was presented, but this is titled unbudgeted legal settlement payments. $1,290,000 of that, I would not classify as unbudgeted legal settlement payments. One I could say is a settlement, the other one is not. I'll also be voting to table.
All those in favor of tabling item 6B.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved. Item 6B is tabled.
6C, reading by title, filed a council number 88, 2023, in ordinance. Ratifying the time-sensitive payment of the mayor and other appropriate city officials for $2,500,000 from the city of Scranton's court awards account number as noted, and authorizing the reimbursement of the $2,500,000 from the city of Scranton's general fund account to pay for the time-sensitive unbudgeted court-ordered payment.
If we're reading by title of item 6C, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6C pass, excuse me, reading by title.
Second. Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
6D, reading by title, filed to council number 89, 2023, in ordinance, setting forth its intent to issue a general obligation note series of 2023 in the principal amount of $4,070,000 pursuant to the Act of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania 53PA CS Chapters 80 to 82 as amended, reenacted, and supplemented known as the Local Government Unit Debt Act.
If we're reading by title of item 6D, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6D pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
The motion passes 3-1.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, filed to council number 83, 2023, amending filed to council number 33, 2022, in an ordinance as amended entitled, appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2023 to and including December 31st, 2023, by the adoption of the General City Operating Budget 2023 as amended by transferring $50,000 from contingency account number as noted to operating expenditures, Veterans Organizations account number as noted.
What is the recommendation, chairperson of the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I spoke about this in fifth order. If we utilize this money in a timely manner, we wouldn't have to be doing this budget transfer. So I would just, moving forward, I would suggest the administration moves this money in a timely manner.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, filed to council number 84, 2023, creating and establishing special city account number as noted entitled, PMA HMGP Payable Assets to receive grant payments from the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program through the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency.
What is the recommendation, chairperson of the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, filed to council number 85, 2023, creating and establishing special city account number as noted entitled, PMA HMGP Payable Liability to expend grant payments from the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program through the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson of the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, Resolution Number 299, 2023, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding between the city of Scranton and neighboring entities to benefit all parties in meeting the requirements of the municipal separate storm source system regulations and storm water management.
As chairperson of the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I think this is really important and timely in light of the flooding issues that we've been having, although those flooding issues are not new. This has been an issue for many years, and we need better storm water management, not just within the city, but within our region to be able to combat that. And so this is just another step forward towards achieving that.
Couldn't agree more. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 300, 2023, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of the Tellespont Senior Services to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account Monroe grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $65,000 to be used for the project to be known as the Advocacy Center.
What is the recommendation, chairperson of the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, just taking a look at this, this is a grant, it's for $2 million. It's looking at the Wyoming Avenue Streetscapes. These are things that we've been talking about for a while. I do believe it's part of the walkability study. They're going to be taking out lanes on this street, they're going to be adding bike lanes.
I think that's the next one. I think that's 7F. Could be wrong.
I jumped ahead on that.
This was a $65,000 plus.
Well, I'll save that one.
Okay. So on the question, 7E for the $65,000 Tellespont Senior Services project known for the Advocacy Center. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 301, 2023, ratifying and approving the city's application, acceptance, and administration of funds from the Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program through the Department of Transportation for up to $2,023,230 with a match funding obligation of $245,000 in American Rescue Plan funding for the city of Scranton's project, Wyoming Avenue Complete Streets.
What is the recommendation, chairperson of the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question.
All right, on the question, so this, I believe, is piece of the walkability study. It's the Wyoming Avenue Streetscapes. I see that it's noted as complete streets at this point in time. I did ask last week if there's any plans or designs for other work available or other work that's going to be coming, because we do have 18 street projects that we're going to be doing. To give you an estimate on the cost here, we're looking at $2 million plus a $245,000 ARP match. But the answer to that was the administration does not have a finalized design plan to offer as the project in the application processes for grant funding. The city engineer did, however, complete a downtown master plan January of '22, which includes suggestions and strategies for the space, including road diet, green space, bicycle lanes, paving sidewalks, and helped the administration provide information for the funding application without knowing if the city will be awarded. We're unable to move forward with the crystallized design, but can share the same when we are awarded funding. So it looks like each of these Streetscapes are going to be done piecemeal with grant funding. One question I do have, Mr. Voldemer, if we could reach out, is how far are we taking the complete streets project? And is the administration adopting a complete streets policy in the city of Scranton?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 302, 2023, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of Tripp Park Missy League to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $149,000 for the project to be known as Tripp Park Missy League Batting Cages Project located at 2199 Dorothy Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18504, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton, PA to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant for up to $149,000 awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
What is the recommendation, chairperson of the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
7H for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, Resolution Number 303, 2023, ratifying and approving the submission of a contract with Rutledge Excavating Inc. to perform debris removal services for the city of Scranton for Scranton Debris Removal Number Three.
What is the recommendation, the vice chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7H.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7H legally and lawfully adopted.
7I for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, Resolution Number 304, 2023, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement for services with the law firm of Hughes, Nichols, and O'Hara for legal services for the Meadowbrook Flood Project, Eastman Acquisition Project.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7I.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7I legally and lawfully adopted.
7J for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, Resolution Number 305, 2023, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement for services with Allrose LLC for appraisal services for the Meadowbrook Flood Project, Eastman Acquisition Project.
As chairperson of the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7J.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7J legally and lawfully adopted.
7K for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 306, 2023, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of Career Technology Center, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $18,000 for the project to be known as the Career Technology Center Fencing Project located at 3201 Rockwell Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18508, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton, PA to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant for up to $18,000 awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
What is the recommendation, chairperson of the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7K.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7K legally and lawfully adopted.
7L for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, Resolution Number 307, 2023, amending Resolution Number 282, 2023, a resolution entitled, Accepting a Donation from Amos Towers in the Amount of $3,600 to the Scranton Fire Department to be placed in the Special Cities Service Account Number as noted to strike the account title of Special City Services and replace the same with its actual account title of SFD Donation Account.
What's the recommendation of the chairperson of the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7L.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7L legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, filed to council number 64, 2023.
This ordinance is creating overtime reporting requirements for all city departments and employees. It's been tabled until we receive additional information from the administration.
8B, filed to council number 81, 2023.
This ordinance is the city's 2024 capital budget. It had been tabled until a public hearing was held, and it will be placed in seventh order at next week's meeting for final vote. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.